We have a roll call by city recorder.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Here.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Herbs.
Here.
City Administrator James.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of regular session, May 13th, 2025. A copy of those minutes been placed in your book. If you've had a chance to look through those, we entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the board to approve the minutes of the regular session from May 13th, 2025, has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays have like sign. Hear none, motion carries. We have no proclamations and a recognition of citizens by the mayor at this time. We now have our communications from the city administrator, Mr. James Finch.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Since the last meeting, I've had a couple of emergencies I've had to deal with that I need to put into the record. We had a... I know Tim always makes an issue out of not saying we had some kind of a spurge or blowback in the electrical system at the community center, but whatever you want to call it, we had an interruption of service. I think that's what he calls it. And when we had a sur... I think we had a surge and it blew out some of the stuff in our Dectron in the pool, which is a major deal when it happens. And it was the compressor and then the freon and everything. It was $18,000 repower to get the pool in the community center back up and running. The other thing, as you all know, we voted to replace the sewer line at the Tanner Building. And during the process of that project, we discovered that at some point in the distant past, someone in their wisdom had run the downspouts into the sewer line from the building, and that is illegal. So we had to fix that once we discovered it and become aware of it. So we did that, and that was an expense of $22,000. So I approved both of those expenses, and now I just want to get it into the record that I had to do that so that we can stay good with the auditors. And y'all, that way y'all know about it and we can move on. The only other thing I have is there's been so much confusion over, you know, tonight we have on the agenda about the annexation up around the golf course. And this has kind of been a learning process for myself. You know, we've only annexed a couple of little parcels over the last few years because the law was changed to where it can only be done through some type of referendum or by owner's request. And so I've always let Gary just deal with it and not really dug into it that much myself. Well, this one has been so controversial, I've had to educate myself on it, and I'm about an expert on annexation by request now, whether I want it to be or not. And so the process with this now, under this new system, is tonight, the vote tonight, is not up or down on annexation. The vote tonight is to move the process forward to a public hearing, because there's a lot of confusion. Used to, under the old system, you had to have two readings because it was done by ordinance. Now it's done by resolution. It's no longer done by ordinance because it's on a request, so it's not as stringent. And so with still being familiar with the old way of doing it, you know, everybody kind of thought it was two votes up or down, and it's not. It's only... The vote is only to move it forward to the public hearing process. That's all you're voting on tonight when we get to that. And for clarification for the public to understand that, because there's a lot of misinformation, there's a lot of misunderstanding. Heck, I misunderstood it myself in the very beginning until I sat down and read and reread the state law on annexation. And so you do, there has to be an approval by administration to move the process forward to a public hearing. Then there has to be a public hearing 21 days, no sooner. You can go 15 to 21, and ours says 21. 21 days later, and then you can have the vote up or down. And that will be, the mayor's going to call a meeting tonight for June the 30th for the public hearing and for the call meeting strictly for the annexation vote, up or down on the annexation. And so I just wanted to make sure there was clarity on that for you guys and for the public, because there's so much interest in this, and there is so much misinformation out there. I know you all have been bombarded with a million questions, and the majority of them have been misinformation, if not, has been where somebody started a rumor, spread a rumor for whatever reason, you know, social media, oh, it's wonderful, nobody lies on there. So I know you guys have been tormented. I know. You know, I've not been as bad as you all have. But I can't go to a restaurant or a grocery store that somebody asking me about it, and I know it's worse for you all. And so I just, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood what was taking place tonight for you guys and for the public as well. This is not a vote tonight on annexation. This is a vote to move the process forward to the public hearing phase. That's all we're doing tonight. So just so everybody understands what's happening. Yes, sir.
Okay, if the public hearing is June the 30th?
Yes, sir.
Will there be a call meeting after the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, same day?
Yes, sir. That's what the mayor... The mayor's not officially announced it. I'm kind of jumping ahead of him, but it's hard to explain this and kind of not steal his thunder on it. But he has shared with me that that was his intent tonight, to call a meeting before June the 30th. So that's what we're planning on. That's what we've got, the paperwork that the public hearing, if approved tonight, will be June the 30th, and it will be followed with a call meeting on the up or down vote on annexation. And so again, I wasn't exactly clear on that myself until I sat down and read that ordinance, not the ordinance, but the law, that it's the way it's set up now. And so, yes, ma'am.
When did this process change?
When, it actually changed when they changed the law from that you could annex, you could have forced annexations. When they did away with that and they changed it to you could only annex through by consent, referendum, or owner's request. And so, like I say, it's partially my own fault. I just didn't dig into it that deep because we've only had a couple, and I'll just let Gary handle them, you know? I've let him take care of it. I really didn't dig into it, you know? I focused on other things because that was simple, and I just let him deal with it. But this one wasn't simple, and so I had to go in and start researching so I knew what I was talking about. And I learned some things, and that's on me for not being totally up to speed on it sooner. But once I... Because I thought it was still two votes up or down. Because it is still two votes, but it's not up or down. It's only one vote up or down. And it's confusing if you don't really pay close attention because you're still having two votes, you know, concerning the annexation. It's just the first vote is not an up or down vote. It's just to move it forward in the process. There's only one up or down vote required with a resolution. If it was still an ordinance, there would still be two up or down votes. Any ordinance requires two up or down votes and a public hearing. Now, this is the only thing I'm aware of, and of course Gary's better versed in a lot of this than I am. There may still be something else, but this is the only thing I'm aware of, this being annexation, that has a resolution and requires a public hearing. It's generally only an ordinance requires a public hearing, but where the annexation is concerned, because it's its own animal, it's a different process entirely from everything else we do. And that's why that we were all kind of in the dark exactly how it worked, other than Gary, because he'd done it before. And so it's, you know, it's been an eye-opener for me. I didn't exactly understand all the fine details until I... And I sat and I read the whole thing, and then I thought, what? And I went back and read it again because I thought, I can't, you know, is that right? But I know the mayor's big on transparency. I agree with him, and I wanted to take the opportunity to lay all that out there so everybody'd understand, you know, that we're learning this deal a little bit too, you know? And so that's how it works. I've read it repeatedly. I'm confident in it this time, and Gary and I have even talked about it after I read it, comparing notes a little bit. But you do still, you still have two votes, but the first one's just to move it forward. It's not up or down. And tonight, and I thought it was. Honestly, I thought both votes were up or down because under ordinance it was. These only require one up or down vote, and that's, that'll be the one after the public hearing, because you have to have the public have the opportunity to speak their concerns before you have the vote. So that's why it's set up that way. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you. As a mouthful.
Thank you. Mr. Finch.
Do I ask a question?
Do you have the opportunity to ask a question after, at the end of this meeting?
Thank you.
Okay. Item six, item five, I'm sorry. There's correspondence and reports, city administr... No, I'm sorry, consideration of reappointment to the planning commission, Mr. Terry White's term. I believe Mr. White is in the audience. If not, no, okay. Is board approved?
I'll make a moment to put Mr. White back on.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion on the board to reappoint Mr. Terry White to the planning commission. Has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays have like sign. Hear none, motion carries. Reports from committees, members of council, and other officers? Anyone here? Okay, we'll move on. Item eight, excuse me, old business and unfinished business. Item A is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2025-07, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
And the mayor, I'll read the caption. That ordinance is into the record. It's ordinance number 2025-07, an ordinance amending the annual operating budget and capital program for the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2024-2025.
What is the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2025-07, budget amendment for the city of Newport, has been properly seconded. We need a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan. Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2025-08, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And that's ordinance number 2025-08, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2024-2025 for Newport Grammar School.
You've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2025-08, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School, has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance, but I'm sorry, we need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item C is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2025-09, budget for fiscal year 2025-26.
And that's ordinance number 2025-09, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the city of Newport and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School and the tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026.
Okay, it's the board's pleasure.
Make that motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2025-09, budget for fiscal year 2025-26. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item D is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2025-10, amending the zoning ordinance replacing landscaping regulations.
And that's the ordinance number 2025-10, an ordinance amending the city of Newport's zoning ordinance, Chapter 3, Section 310, to strengthen the landscape and screening requirements.
Okay. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2025-10, amending the zoning ordinance replacing landscaping regulations. It has been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. New business, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2025-11, city of Newport adopting the 2021 international fire code and 2021 NFPA 101 life safety code.
Yeah, we're currently in the 2012. We've been there for several years. The state of Tennessee has just updated and went to the 2021, and we're staying in line with them, so we have them to fall back on, you know, to help us with inspections and stuff going on with that.
And we're required by law to stay either with or very close to where the state is, and so we like to stay right with them so everybody's on the same page.
Okay, first presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2025-11, an ordinance to amend the city of Newport municipal code, Title 7, Fire Protection and Fireworks, Chapter 3, Fire Code, adopting of the 2021 International Fire Code and the 2021 NFPA 101 Life Safety Code and repealing ordinance number 2016-12 and ordinance 2018-01.
Now, as you've read that into the record, we will... What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay. If you have stereo seconds, we're okay with the motion on the board for consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2025-11. The city of Newport adopting the 2021 international fire code and 2021 NFPA 101 life safety code. It has been properly seconded. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item B, consideration of resolution number 2025-10, to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Newport, Tennessee.
I'm just here for questions. I think we've talked about this a lot by now.
Yeah, if you want to turn over to the new copy of the resolution that y'all received, in the back where it has the dates above where everybody has to sign, it says that tonight on June 10th, 2025, we are voting to pass on to a public hearing. So that is spelled out in there that that's what we're doing. We're not voting on annexation. We're voting to move forward to a public hearing.
And the date on the original was for the July meeting because we hadn't...
We hadn't called a meeting.
Yeah, so what was...
Correct. That's why there was confusion, because when it was drawn up, you know, a week or so ago, the hook of the call meeting had not been called. And so the routine is you put the second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, and that's what was done by staff because that's the routine. And so that's what was in here. And so it was noticed today, rightfully so, that we were moving that. So we amended that so that before there was a vote tonight, that's in here. This is only a vote to move this process forward to a public hearing, and that's why I wanted to go through that explanation so everybody understood exactly what's going on here.
And Mayor, I would like to put into the record the property description. First property located 1220 Golf Course Road, further described as tax partial 065059.00. The second partial is located Tucson Road, further described as tax partial 065028.04. Over to you, partner.
For the presentation, what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then for consideration of resolution number 2025-10 to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Newport, Tennessee, and to move the process forward. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C is consideration to purchase of Tip Brown property.
Check this problem. Ever since the flood, we've been looking at properties on the river. We recently bought two that joined the parks of flood property. We're only trying to buy more, but only with FEMA or TEMA help. But it takes years to go through that process, and the property owners are not locked in. They can sell at any time to anybody that comes along. So there are just a few properties that we truly felt like we just absolutely needed to have, and this is one of them. And it adjoins the police department, the old police department property down there. It's on the river. We've tried to negotiate with Mr. Brown. We've been, Gary and I and Grant and all, I mean, we've all come at him trying to get him to come off his asking price, and you all know Tip. I like him, but he's, when it comes to money, he's pretty stubborn, and he would not come off his number. So if we get this piece of property, we can move the Riverwalk forward. It's been, this property has been a stumbling block for the Riverwalk. This will open that up. We've got, we've currently got a grant that we need to be spending. We've got an extension thanks to the flood, but now we can move forward in extending the Riverwalk on down to the trailhead, which is beside the simple cafe. And so we've got permission from the rest of the property owners to move forward. This one will allow us to do that, and it will stop something we've been battling for 24 years trying to move this Riverwalk. Secondly, is, as we talked about earlier, it's our goal to have a farmer's market on the river down along with the back of where the old police department is and with this property. And so this will work well into that, and it'll be made into a park, it'll be on the Riverwalk, and we feel like having the farmer's market down there and all the other things that can be done with that property once we get it developed will be a real asset to the city. And so we respectfully request that the city purchase this property. And he's asking $100,000 for it, but that is less than it's appraised for. And yes, without the dilapidated building that's still hanging on down there, we will get rid of that thing quickly. But the lot itself is appraised about $20,000 higher than that. It amazed me, I couldn't believe it, but it is. And so I guess if you want to look at it that way, we're getting a bargain, but I don't, you know, it's hard to look at it that way. But I mean, it's one of those deals. You either beat his price or you don't get it. So I, I mean, we can afford to do it, and I think it'll be an asset to the city, and we'd like for y'all to consider buying.
I may have asked this question before, but are we allowed to tire it down or we have to hire someone?
We're going to hire somebody because it's storm damage and we won't, we can't put it in the landfill. It has to be hauled away. So we're going to, we have already been reaching out to see what professional service would charge us to tire it down and clean off the lot, and we think we can get it done for less than $10,000. So if that's true, we won't have to beat it out.
Mr. Finch.
Yes, sir.
Something just occurred. The amount of money we would have to spend to go around him is probably around this amount, which would take away from the amount of, how far we can go with the grant. So it's kind of...
And it would ruin the flow of the walk. That's why we've not done it already because, yeah.
The 20 engineering and the construction we would have to do is probably about the same cost.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay. Heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Make a moment. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then for consideration of purchase of Tip Brown property, has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance, but no, I think we need a roll call on this one.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item D is consideration of the audit contract for the city of Newport.
It's just that time again, we go, you know, every year at this time, we have to look at, do we want to rehire our current auditors or look elsewhere? And of course, we're very happy with our auditors, but that's y'all's decision.
Okay, heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of audit contract for the city of Newport, has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays have like sign. Hear none, motion carries. Item E is consideration of allowing the police department to apply for safety first grant.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Chief want to be here, but save me a second, I guess that's okay. He submitted a letter. This letter has been submitted as a formal request to apply for the safety first grant with Norfolk Southern Railroad. The grant is available for up to $15,000. The grant has no match for the city of Newport. Respectfully, Scotland Chief of Police, there's no cost to the city. We just need y'all's permission to apply for the grant.
Matthew, is this the same grant we applied for ever year?
It was, this one was, the previous one was $5,000. What we want to do with it is for a drone, it's going to cost that approach of $15,000. So Norfolk said, hey, we got this money, you just have to give permission to apply for it. So that's what we're asking for.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of allowing the police department to apply for the safety first grant, has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Nays have like sign.
Thank you.
Hear none, motion carries. Thank you, Matthew. Item F, consideration of downtown playdate.
Hi, Monica could not make it today. She had a doctor's appointment, so I'm filling in for her. So if you all remember, this time last year, we came before you and asked for your approval to host a downtown playdate in July. Last year was the first year we did it, and even though it rained, it ended up being a huge success in our opinion. We had about 150 kids come. I would say probably around 300 people came and participated. And so what we were wanting to ask is for your all's approval to host this event again this year. It took place back behind City Hall in this area. We would have had blow up, like stuff for kids to play on, but the rain came, so that didn't happen. But we did have a lot of participants, such as C5 and some other organizations tabling for information about back to school. So we're asking for that again. The date we're looking at is July Saturday, July 19th, with the rain date of July 26th. And the hours will be 10 to 2. So it'll overlap somewhat with the farmer's market, which will be 9 to 1.
Okay, heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of downtown playdate on July 19th with a rain date of 7:26. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays have like sign. Here none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, bids, purchases and expenses. Item A is consideration of bids for annual paving for fiscal year 2025-26.
Ben couldn't be here tonight. He's on vacation this week. He's taking his annual pilgrimage to the mountains. So he asked me if I would just to quickly go over this for him. It's the annual bid we have to go through every year for paving for the coming year. And we only, as usual, we receive one bid. And so there's not a whole lot of choice. You've got one proposal in there for asphalt for the coming year, and it's with Newport Paving. And it's, now, don't ask me to explain what these codes mean, but 411 grade B is $125 for them to bring it, $94 for us to pick it up. 307 grade BM is $121 for them to bring it and $90 for us to pick up. So I have no idea what that means, so just for the record.
Is this in line with last year's cost?
Yeah, I'm sure it's probably up a little bit, but you get a percentage, a small percentage increase this year, just trying to keep up with inflation.
All right, you've heard the board, the presentation. What's the board's pleasure, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of bid for the annual paving for fiscal year 2025-26. It has been properly seconded. We will require a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Glenna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Last mayor, Conny Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is consideration of bids for playground equipment for city park.
Yes, sir. Of course, Molly and I will tag team you guys again today. She's got the final proposal that you have in your book, and she can tell you what those are.
So this is just kind of an addition to last month. We would like to purchase, request to purchase another five pieces of playground equipment for the city park. This would be coming from Miracle Playground, who is the company that we also used last month. And these pieces are on a Sourcewell contract, so we don't have to bid them out. And this money wasn't our budget for this fiscal year. And this is a part of that, the musical pieces that would be in the ADA area.
In which park?
City park.
The big park, okay.
Yep. And this is, these specific pieces will be going into a totally new space. So we are working on that design still.
Okay, you've heard the presentation.
Oh, I guess I should tell you, $15,405. And again, in our budget.
Okay, heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to consider, for consideration of bids for playground equipment for the city park in the amount of $15,405. It has been properly seconded. Please, the roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Glenna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Last mayor, Conny Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Item 11, we'll move into our comments from citizens. Anyone that wishes to speak, you have five minutes. I think he was first. Yes. Please state your name and...
I'm James Bailey, Cock County High School, class of 1974. I'm here with a question on the public hearing for annexation of the properties designated. There was just mentioned that the public hearing will be on May 30th, which is a Monday.
June 30.
Or June 30, sorry. Would the up-down vote be at the next regular session of the board here, or when would the up-down vote?
There'd be a call meeting immediately following the public hearing.
So it would be on the same day?
They're both the same day.
Okay. Just wanted clarification on that. Thank you very much.
Yes, you are.
Yes, I also just had a quick question. I think Alderman Ottinger asked you when the process changed for annexation, but I didn't exactly get when it changed. From the research that you did, when was that changed?
I couldn't give you the date. It's been, I don't know, six, seven years ago when the state legislature passed the law, a new law that stopped annexation by ordinance. You could no longer just go out and, cities could not, could no longer annex just by going out and saying, we want to annex. You have to, now it can only be done through a referendum process, which does not necessarily have to be a vote, like having it on the ballot. But you have to go to every property owner and have them sign a petition saying yes or no they want to be annexed. That's how, you can do a group annexation that way, as long as the majority wants to be annexed. Or you can do an annexation strictly by request. And that means that's when a property owner puts a request directly into the city, which is what this is, asking to be annexed. And so it's done, when it was a forced, what was considered a forced annexation, it had to be done by ordinance, and that required two up or down votes. When it changed, when the resident, when the state legislature, this wasn't done on a local level, this was done at the state level. When the state legislature changed the law to do away with forced annexations, it did away with the ordinance requirement, which was two votes up or down, and changed it to a resolution, which is only one vote up or down. But it also put a requirement in there that you had to vote to move forward with a public hearing. So you still have two votes, but one is strictly for a public hearing, is to move forward to approve a public hearing. It's basically all it does.
So does that mean...
I couldn't give you the date. I don't remember off the top of my head.
I think he was...
Yeah, I was thinking 11 somewhere.
So what's the status of property that the city has annexed in the intervening six or seven years?
We've done it the same way. It's just Gary was taking care of it, and we were having two votes. And it's on me, I wasn't paying close attention. We were still having two votes, and I thought we were having, I just wouldn't, we only, we only annexed a couple of properties since that happened. But they were done the right way.
If a public hearing was required, though, for private annex, you didn't have a public hearing.
We had a public hearing before.
Thank you.
But we met the requirements for any annexation that was done. We had public hearings. We've never had an annexation that did not have a public hearing.
James, that occurred. I think I may have been the mayor. I can't remember all the specifics, but I know I think we had, there was four or five phases of annexation. We had a pro, ready to go step by step. We did annexation number one.
Finished one.
We finished one, then the state cut it out.
Right.
So that left, I never didn't like that.
Three of them left.
One got annexed, and the rest of them got off, and that was not fair.
That's correct.
But...
Because they changed the law.
It was not our fault.
The law, their argument for changing the law was that Memphis and Chattanooga was doing what was called finger annexations. And that was where they were going eight and 10 miles out of road and then taking in an interstate interchange, because you have the development that goes on there. And, or they were going into a high-dollar residential area that had million-dollar homes, and they would go miles out to get them because of the tax base. And so the legislature addressed that. And I don't, I have no problem with what that. But they should have just banned finger annexations, is what they should have done. But instead, they banned all annexations. And, you know, some of them now are saying, maybe that wasn't the right thing to do. I didn't think it was when they did it. But it really hamstring cities like us, who haven't had much annexation in 60 years. If you go back and look at the numbers, which I have done, our population now in the city of Newport is where it was in the 60s. Now that's how much we've grown since the 60s, best, none, population-wise. And so when these, you know, we're trying everywhere in the world to get these businesses to come in here, and they look, and Newport had 6,700 people in, or 66, something like that, in the 60s, and now they got 6,800. They say, my God, 60 or 70 years, you've grown 200 people. That's a dead town. But they don't realize how many people go down this interstate. That's why we did that one thing, I forget what it's called, it's, that tracks people off that interstate, so we can show potential businesses, fast food places, sit-down restaurants, whatever, the traffic flow that comes through Newport. So we can show them they have a customer base here and not be sitting and look at population growth every census for the last 60 or 70 years, because we have not grown. You know, I've made the speech before. If you look at the 37821 zip code, which is Newport, Tennessee, every human that sees that address thinks you live in the city of Newport. I deal with that constantly. A lot of people call me that has moved here, and that's their address, and they think they're in the city of Newport, and they're in rank, you know, wanting us to do something about something. And so there's like 16,000 or 17,000 people in that zip code, and there's 6,700 of them in the city of Newport, which is just barely over a third of them. Now that shows you in comparison where the city ought to be population-wise. And we would see much more growth here if we had, if on paper, we had a population of 16,000 people versus a population of 6,800 people. Because people sitting in Chicago looking at numbers don't know jack about Newport, Tennessee. They look at those numbers, they look at data. And so where we sat on our hands for 50 years and didn't annex because somebody didn't like it, we can't annex, you know, because somebody will file a lawsuit, and one person hanging a jury killed the lawsuit. And so we got fed up. We went for 20 years, didn't try to annex. We finally started trying to annex, as Vice Mayor Ball mentioned. We were going out the highway down 2570 towards 411, towards county line. We fought in court for five years. We finally got one of them through, and then they changed the law, and the other three got kicked out. And that was the last regular annexation we did. And then they changed the law. When they changed that law, now you got what you got now. You can only do it if somebody wants to be, or if you pick a neighborhood and the majority of the people in the neighborhood want to be. That's the only two ways you can do it now. But I couldn't get, like Gary said, it's 2014. I know since I've been here, I came down here in 13, and I know it was, I was here when it changed, because Jeremy Faeser said in my office and looked me in the face and said it would not affect small towns like Newport. And I told him, I've read the law, and it does. And he said, oh, no, I looked at the wrong one. Well, I did. And so, but that's, that's a stick in my craw, I want to get over it. I don't like being misled in my face.
But James, not only were we wanting that for growth, it's such spot annexation that if a call come out for police or fire, they had to waste time determining if that business was in the city or the county.
That's correct.
And it's still a nightmare.
Mayor Robinson did that. When we, when they first built the new, well, everybody calls these new roads the new stretch. When the new stretch was built out 2570, they were looking to annex and all the way out to 411. And Danny Wester was the mayor. And I know about this because I was working in the mayor's office in 93 and 94. I took a leave of absence from the police department. I worked two years in the mayor's office and went back to the police department when Danny went out of office. And we were working on annexing that corridor out through there, all the way to the other exit. Mayor Dykes, the first Mayor Dykes, put the lights out there to illuminate that interchange so that people would be willing to get off of it, so it wasn't pitch dark at night, and nobody would get off of it. And Mayor Dykes the second pushed to get that done. He's the first Mayor Dykes, but he's Mayor Dykes the second. It was one of his goals to get that done, because he felt like we needed that out there, and we did, and he got it done, and he lit that interchange, and that kind of started growth going. But we didn't have any businesses out there that was in the city. And so we were spinning to light up this interchange, and we were getting nothing. I mean, if they got off and went to a business, we weren't getting any sales tax. We're spent, we're footing, as we're prone to do. I'm trying not to get on the soapbox. You know, we do stuff that moves this community forward, but the city doesn't benefit from it. We do it because we're trying to help, but we don't get any gain from it financially to help support the costs. And so Danny, he was trying to build up the growth out through there in the tax base. And this was before the lights got put up. I got out of sequence, but it made me think of it. But anyway, Danny wanted to move to out to that exit and get the stuff out through there in the city so that it would spur, he felt like it would spur growth. And he got, he lost the election, and Jim Robinson came in, and Jim Robinson did not agree with the philosophy of the annexation process. So he said that he was only going to take in, or would propose to the council, that they only take in those properties that wanted to be, like you have to do now. Now, back then, you did not have to do that. But, but he said, it's his opinion, if they didn't want to come in the city, they shouldn't have to. So he went, he sent Mark Robinson and Walter Cole out through there, and they checked and talked to the ones that want to come in the city, and they got the list, and it was voted to put them in the city. And it looks like a jack-o'-lantern's mouth out through there. This is in, this is out, this is out, this is in, this is out, this is in, this is out. And it's a nightmare, which now that you've got central dispatch that's computer-aided, it's much better because they've got a number on there that signifies whether or not it's in the city. It is better now than it used to be because of that technology. But it used to, they weren't sure what was in the city and what wasn't. And so if it was a fire, they'd send the city and the county. If it was a burglar alarm, they'd send the city and the county, because they didn't know who owned it, which one was responsible for it. It's been a nightmare, because it's just, even though it's much better, you still, you know, a lot of these guys, when they're patrolling, they don't know for sure if they're looking at a city piece of property or not. But you've got the property owners out through there. Again, they got police patrol riding back and forth every 15 or 20 minutes checking on their properties. They got streetlights, they got snow removal, they got all these things. And you can say, oh, that's a state highway, but we are responsible for snow removal because we have a state contract, or we're responsible for all state roads inside the city. And so they benefit from all these city amenities out through there, but they don't pay any city taxes. And so we've repeatedly done this over the years. You know, we get amenities out there, but we don't reap any rewards from it. But we just keep trying to be a good neighbor, work together, not try to do anything that would slow down what little growth we can get, and the city takes it on the chin over and over and over. And so, like I say, I can get on that soapbox all day, because it really annoys me, I have to deal with it all the time.
Your five minutes are up.
Thank you. It's his fault. It's his fault. He's the guy.
It went off five minutes.
He's the guy. Well, I hope to educate people, because people don't understand how things work, and I like to take any opportunity I can to... and I like to take any opportunity I can to educate people on the process.
Anyone else wish to be heard today?
Maybe I'd wire them down. They tied on this.
Please state your name.
Lisa Rick. And I live at the golf course. I just have two questions. The people here from the golf course, we don't want the golf course closed.
I thought you asked who was here.
No. But you're not from the golf course in Tucson. The people who live in the neighborhood of the golf course, how many of y'all are in the city?
Me, what?
How many of you are in the city? How many of you pay city taxes? Were you home?
Paid for this.
Thank you. We do.
Anyone else?
I would just like to throw out there that also a property in the city is paying a portion of city taxes.
Anyone else? If not, we are at the point of adjournment. I have a motion.
You got it.
I'll beat you.
See, I'm worn down there.
We are...